Good morning, good morning. Today is December 11th. Want to welcome you to this committee hearing. I'm joined by Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, so we have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, why don't we start out by reading the items that are on the consent calendar? I have cards, we'll quickly get into public comment.
Okay. Good morning, sir. I'm Richard Williams, Office of the City Clerk. I'll go ahead and start with item number two. Item number two is City Attorney and City Clerk Reports, Resolution and Ordinance, Relative to Calling a Special Election and a Special Runoff Election for the Purpose of Filling a Prospective Vacancy in the 12th Council District. Item number three is Chief Legislative Analyst Report and Revised Resolution Relative to Communicating the City's Concerns to the Federal Aviation Administration Regarding Flight Path Changes at Hollywood-Berlin Airport. Item number four is Resolution Rodriguez Blumenfeld and Chief Legislative Analyst Report Relative to Establishing the City's Position Regarding Senate Bill 3157, the Streamline Small Cell Deployment Act. Item number five is Revised Resolution Weston Price Relative to the Closure of City Streets for the Herbalife 24 Triathlon, Los Angeles, on June 2nd, 2019. Item number six is Department of Cannabis Regulation Report Relative to Resolution Authority for Nine Positions in the Department to Support the Social Equity Program and Other Functions Related to Cannabis Regulation. Item number seven is CLA Report and Revised Resolutions Relative to Recommendations for the City's 2019-2020 Federal and State Legislative Programs as Submitted by the Los Angeles Department of Transportation.
Okay. Well, let's start off with multi-cards. I want to call up Mr., is it Bieber? J. Bieber and Mr. Previn. Come on up, sir. You have two minutes. Then we'll get into our, the big item.
Is this for both items?
Yes. One minute for each.
Sure, okay. On item number two, I'm here representing the North Hills West Neighborhood Council and the Vice President, and I'm speaking on the behalf of the Neighborhood Council. On November 15th, 2018, the North Hills West Neighborhood Council passed the following resolution. We urge Council President Weston and the City Council to adopt the following guidelines regarding the resignation of Councilmember Englander. A) CD-12 should not be left without representation past January 1st, 2020, and a special election should be called to effectuate that outcome. B) Any interim caretaker appointed to CD-12 should have extensive knowledge of the district and commit to representing the interests of the district's shareholders, stakeholders over any outsider or special interest. C) Any interim caretaker appointed to CD-12 should commit to not running for the seat or influencing the election of a new council member in any way. And D) Establish an moratorium on any major decisions affecting Council District 12, such as land use, homeless housing, and transportation until a new council member is elected. Thank you on that item. On item number one, I would like to comment that personally, I am fully in support of the amended motion to lower the threshold to $11,500. If you don't do that, and you also reduce the amount of matching funds to $115, it would be almost impossible for small candidates, those that are not well-connected politically, who would like to run for city council and actually have a chance of making it through the process, would be almost impossible for those types of candidates to reach matching fund status. So we urge that you adopt the amendment to lower the threshold for matching funds to $11,500. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Herman.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn, and we're entitled to five minutes per the Neighborhood Council rule. But for starters, I'd like to say, thank you for looking at the campaign finance ordinance. I think everybody here agrees that it needs to be changed. But lowering the threshold to 11.5 is not far enough, because 11.5 is double the threshold in the big city of New York. So it's going to do a good job of keeping people from accessing the public funds. What's worse is that Studio City Neighborhood Council, which is a reasonable respectable one, put this on their agenda, met on it, and agreed that we would have a conversation. We got Paul Coretts, who's one of the leaders from one of the wealthier districts. There are five districts that have a much higher average wage. That's Weezer, Coretts, Bonin, and David Rue, and Mitchell Farrell, and maybe one other. But what they do is they benefit enormously from this matching fund proposal that you have. It is, it's quite egregious that the amount that public money will go to those top-tier candidates only is about, goes from $225 for a primary and a general to $340,000, sir. So we are widening the cos into the matching fund for the beneficiaries, which is all of you. Now, that said, we do want to work on it. I would ask that you pin, put a pin in this. Now, Bieber is from CD-12, he's a good man, but they are going to pig out at 6:1, and they are going to, special elections typically spend much more matching money. So Holly Walcott's estimated item to have $2.4 million for Mitch Englander to go be a lobbyist for the group that is getting a $97 million feasibility gap. Sir, this smells to high heaven. So in the nicest way, put a pin in it. Why don't you come? You're the leader, to Studio City, we'll talk about it, the districts, this is a citywide issue. Mike Bonin is the Clean Money Man, he wrote about it, he wrote a very moving motion, and David Rue has been a reform king. So why don't they join Paul Coretts in January? Why don't we not rush this through? Let's get it right. I think you have to have a special election, because that's our system. But Mitch Englander and his lobbyists should pay for it. You okay with that, sir? You make that proposal to AEG and all those affluent folks who are getting $97 million of our TOT taxes? Can they at least cover the cost of this $3 million election?
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Herman.
The true meaning to a special election shouldn't be voter fraud. Special election is a requirement that ethically and by charter rules, we follow what Justin Weston has not followed: voter fraud. That's item two. Fuck you. And then on the special cannabis, with licensing and compliance programs, why is it that Mr. Weston is allowing particular licenses to more than one cannabis? Meaning, one individual opens up six different clubs to sell you cannabis when there is a law that prohibits that? Why is that, Herb? Why don't you explain to the public why cannabis regulations are not regulated, and you allow particular special interests to participate with you, so that you can embezzle or money laundering on their behalf? It's something unconstitutional, and I find it demoralizing, the way Eric Garcetti sucks my dick. Eric Garcetti is one asshole of a half when it comes to cannabis business.
Stay on the, stay on the topic. You know, I'm right here. You want to talk about me, talk about me. But stay on the topic, Mr. Herman.
Because if there's no regulations, there's no licensing, there's no compliance, and anyone gets to run this shithole city that Eric Garcetti's created, I'm going to do the same motherfucking thing, just like an NWA, a nigger with motherfucking attitude, because just like Herman "Jason" Weston's son, who voted on voter fraud and is running for the 10th district, that's illegal and wrong. Tell your fucking son to stay home with his maid and have your fucking brown baby, nigga.
Okay. Now I'd like some sanity. Ms. Stewart? Jill, are you here? Now you're disrupting. Now you're disrupting. Sergeants, remove Mr. Herman. One second, Ms. Stewart.
He's continuing disruptive meeting, using profanities as he slowly exits the room.
Okay, Ms. Stewart.
Jill Stewart, Coalition to Preserve L.A. We urge you to look at the California Clean Money Campaign Report and vote to change the threshold you're considering. $11,500 is much more reasonable, because if you don't lower it to that level, you're going to slash the number of candidates who qualified in the last several years by one half. That means you guys won't have any competition, and that's not democratic, and you cannot support internally an old boys' club, which is what we're getting with in L.A. now. Slashing the number of female candidates, in fact, who qualified, 15 of them, would actually be wiped out. It would just be three under the new threshold. That's how hard it is for women to raise that kind of money, because the guys still have better Rolodexes. You have got to lower this threshold to $11,500. It isn't even enough, but it has to happen. You're going to have the highest threshold in the country for public money, and all the public money is going to go to incumbents and insiders. That's wrong, guys.
Didn't you have two cards?
Yes, I do.
Then she has gone.
Okay. So what I'm saying to you guys is, the reason we have only two women on the L.A. City Council, and I looked around, and that's 1990's era for all the big cities in the United States. We are going backwards, and love you guys, but you just don't think that well without the women. You have got to mix it up, guys. You've got to lower the threshold. $11,500 is, it's actually too much. You'll still have a very hard time raising that kind of money in Los Angeles. Believe me, I have tried, but not for office. But if you guys don't do something soon, I might just run for office. So you need to lower it to $11,500, at least. It's still going to be way more than New York City asks people to match. They only ask people to raise $5,000 to get the public matching funds. Do not pass something that gives the incumbents public money to run for office, and if I may use a dirty word, screws everybody else. Please, thank you very much.
If you consider that a dirty word, you can come every day and give public comment. Okay. I think, Mr. Clerk, that that handles all of the multi-cards, correct? Okay, so why don't we, we'll take item one and put it aside, but we'll vote on two through seven. So... Okay, wait, I do have Judasha put in a card on item six. So this will be the last card. Are you here? Is it? Okay, well, let's prepare them to vote on these items. So without objection, items two through seven will be deemed approved. Now we're going to begin taking public comment on item one, and let me, yes?
Mr. Chair, would you like to go down the list of the items as far as what actually is being approved?
I will allow you to do that, yes.
Okay. For item number two, the committee is adopting the City Attorney Report and City Clerk Reports, Resolution and Draft Ordinance. For item number three, the committee is adopting the CLA Report and Revised Resolution. For item number four, the city is adopting the CLA Report and Resolution. For item number five, the committee is adopting the Revised Resolution. For item number six, the committee is adopting the Department of Cannabis Regulation Report. And for item number seven, I believe the committee wanted to take an action on that as far as, did you want to continue that item, or did you want to approve it?
Seven it is. We are going to continue seven.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so why don't I start out with Barry Levine, Brad Davies, and Brian Carroll? Please come forward. Very good to see you.
Thank you for having me. I urge you to support the amendment to reduce the threshold.
Pardon me, sir, one moment. And, Mr. Chair, would you like me to read item number one into the record?
Go right ahead.
Item number one is Amending Motion and City Attorney Report and Ordinance Relative to Amending the Los Angeles Municipal Code to Revise the City's Public Matching Funds Program.
Now, go ahead, Barry.
My name's Barry Levine, and I urge you to support the Bonin Amendment to Lower the Threshold to $11,500. Otherwise, the intent of 6:1 matching funds is really not achieved. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Good morning, I'm Brad Davies. I'm with Money Out, Voters In. We're a grassroots group that register voters, get people to the polls, and try to get the money out of politics. We're not doing too well at that. I think the matching funds is the greatest idea. I mean, the city of Los Angeles is supposedly a leader in the country. New York has beaten us on this. I think we should definitely get involved in this. And I am concerned about the threshold amount to be qualified for the funds, and I think we should reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I just want to mirror what some people have said. I think public matching is great, I think lowering the threshold is great, but we're not lowering it nearly far enough. And right now, it seems like we're just giving a couple scraps to add a couple more low-income or lower-tier candidates while giving still 6:1 to higher. And currently, 20% of the top candidates get 80% of the public money, and I don't think that this amendment really does anything to address that point. Very happy to see that there's a debate requirement, although there's also nothing in it that defines what a debate is, and it doesn't even seem like it has to be done in the public. So if they're giving public money, they should probably be required to face the public, I would say, twice. Currently, it's once with no other further requirement. But currently, I don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, but I fear that this amendment is going to try to do something to say you did something, and then really not do anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's get Carlos Amador, Carolina Goodman, and Isakary Sutkin.
Good morning, council members. My name is Carlos Amador, I'm a resident of the 12th district, and I'm here to speak in support of Councilmember Bonin's amendment to make city council races more equitable, just, and fair. As a grassroots candidate for city council, City 12, for 2020 election, having inadequate funding for to mount viable campaigns will be crucial to ensure that candidates that come from the community are able to sit in city council and represent the community. The truth is that with elections moving to be aligned with federal and state elections in 2020, the cost to run a viable campaign will be increased dramatically, and will make it harder for community members and community leaders to make an effort to sit and run for city council. I ask that you support Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council races to $11,500. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Carolina Goodman with the League of Women Voters. We want to thank you for recognizing that reducing the influence of money in politics makes elections much more fair. The October reforms actually empower small donors, but it makes it more difficult for grassroots candidates to qualify for matching funds. Last year, of the 10 most populous cities in the United States, Los Angeles ranked worst in having women on city councils. A high aggregate threshold to qualify for L.A. matching funds deters women. They underestimate their qualifications, and they overestimate the barriers for running for office. The recent report from California Clean Money shows that under the October rules, only three women who ran from 2013 to 2017 in L.A. would have qualified. Please support the Bonin Amendment.
Thank you, thank you. Next speaker, please. And then after you, is it David Levitas, Don Bush, Greg Bartlett? Yes.
Good morning, my name is Carrie Sutkin, and I live in Elysian Valley. I'm active on my Neighborhood Council and on an alliance of 16 Neighborhood Councils, and I just mentioned that, sir, because we're trying to watch out for good government, and we're, I was unaware of this policy coming forward, so I appreciate being called. But I've worked on several female campaign elections, including incumbents, and it's always difficult. The last one, the candidate was out fundraised 10 to 1 and lost for a city council race. And more recently, I've been called to help, and we do a lot of campaigning door-to-door, and people would like to see women on the ballot, so anything you can do to help, would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, good morning, council. My name is Dr. David Levitas, Executive Director of LA Forward, here to speak in favor of the Councilmember Bonin's amendment. As LA Forward's been involved in supporting this campaign finance reform and strengthening of the public matching funds program, we've been really heartened to see what council has done so far, and we think it's incredibly important that this amendment be part of the package that's passed, because otherwise, we're really defeating the intent and the spirit of the other reforms. Like others have said, increasing the match, 6:1, is really important, but if we're not also increasing access for grassroots candidates, we're not addressing the fundamental problem. As others have mentioned, L.A. has one of the most inaccessible systems for public matching funds in the country. This, if we don't pass this amendment, the problem will actually get far worse. But if we pass it, we will, in addition, when it's combined with other reforms, we'll be making it easier for grassroots candidates to compete in elections, and competitive elections are really a lot of what democracy is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, sirs. My name is Don Bush, I'm with Monkey Wrench Brigade, and I'm here in support of...
Wait, with who?
Monkey Wrench Brigade.
Okay.
It's an organization, an organization of activists in Santa Monica. I would urge you to pass Councilman Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council candidates to $11,500. Obviously, those of us in the citizenry know that money is a problem in politics. If we look to what's going on at the federal level, it's unconscionable. You could help by coming from the bottom up to allow more people to qualify for matching funds and run for office. Thanks very much, have a good day.
Thank you. Greg Bartlett? So I need Jackie Anoy, I think it's Janine Roan, Larisse Summers, Michael Schenk?
My name is Greg Bartlett, I am with Los Angeles Forward, but also a citizen here. I believe that Los Angeles should lead with voter-centered campaigns, not donor-centered campaigns, and public funds, matching funds are very important for that. We need to provide grassroots candidates with adequate funding to mount viable campaigns. In addition, state legislatures with public financing have a higher representation of women in the national average, and as you've heard, we are sorry looking that way. We need to pass Councilman Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council candidates to $11,500.
Thank you, sir. Next, please come and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Jackie, I live in the 4th district. I'd like to reiterate what some other constituents have said and voice my support for the Bonin amendment. That'll help our democracy become more accessible, especially for women and other poorer candidates. I think it's very important to make sure our democracy works by creating an informed public and an accessible political system. That way, you know, the people that experiences the problems in the system the most will be the, you know, voices that we hear on the council and be able to represent what real people are going through. I'd also like to say that qualifying council members are slashed by 73% from 11 to only three without the amendment, and I think it's very important that all candidates should be able to run, whether they have money or not. We should have less money, not more money, in our elections. Thank you very much.
Please come in.
Good morning, my name's Larisse Summers, and I'm here with the League of Women Voters. The current package moving forward on campaign finance would effectively raise our qualifying thresholds, delaying and/or excluding serious candidates from utilizing matching funds. We have the most inaccessible public finance system in the nation. Candidates would need to qualify with over twice as many contributions, and at $25,000, it's five times what New York City's threshold of $5,000. We can do better than New York City. We need to pass Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council candidates. We need to make democracy more accessible.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Janine Roan, and I'm speaking in support of Councilman Bonin's amendment. I'm also an Assembly Delegate for AD 51, and it's an area with a lot of overlapping districts in northeast L.A. where we've had a lot of special elections, probably, I think, about eight in the last two years. So, and the first one being the Congress election, where we had over 12 candidates, four of them women, and I've watched, as every single election comes, we go down in the amount of candidates. We're a very progressive district, we had, we've had an opportunity to have a lot of renewal in our representation, and what's happening is, as our needs go up, the ability to run candidates and understand the community is diminishing. So I'm in support of a lower threshold, definitely, so we can be more representative.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Michael Schenk, I'm with Unrig L.A., and I'm here to ask that you pass Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council candidates to $11,500. And it's important that we do this, because we don't want to make it harder for candidates to qualify for the matching funds. It'll require the same minimum number of contributors required under current law, and all citywide offices will be adjusted similarly. And I just want to say, we need candidates with diverse experiences and diverse backgrounds who actually can understand and work for the communities they're running to represent, and that can only happen if we make the matching funds program accessible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, is there Michelle Sutter, Maylene Carberry, Nestor Limas, Sylvia O'Rough, Sylvia Moore? Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning, I'm Michelle Sutter. I'm the Director of Money Out, Voters In, Movi, and I live in Venice. Thank you for holding this hearing to consider Councilmember Bonin's amendment, which we support. Seven years ago this month, Los Angeles became the first major U.S. city to call for an amendment to overturn Citizens United. The L.A. City Council voted unanimously, and Council President Weston, you were one of those votes. You knew then that special interests given free rein to spend money in politics would ultimately control policy. Though the U.S. Supreme Court has now said twice, in Buckley and in Citizens United, that they have no responsibility to, quote, "level the playing field," unquote, they have understood their constitutional requirements exactly wrong. They are wrong on the framers' idea of the judiciary, and they are out of step with our California and Los Angeles values. We demand and require a leveled playing field. We voted for it in Los Angeles, and we voted for it in the state of California. Absent the Bonin amendment to reduce the qualifying threshold, this will not work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, Milene Carberry with Unrig L.A. Thank you so much for hearing us today. First of all, I want to say that 52 organizations signed on to the letter that we gave all city council members, asking you to vote in favor of Councilmember Bonin's motion to lower the threshold. But I want to talk about the consciousness behind keeping the threshold at $25,000 or higher. It says that city council is a closed club that only wants candidates that can attract large donors. It says to your constituents, this is purely pay-to-play, and that's what I want to address. Lowering the threshold would allow for grassroots candidates more female representation, and the representation of financially challenged districts to have a greater voice, and I believe that is the platform that all of city council has run on. So I believe that's what you want. You want a lower threshold and a greater conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name's Nestor Limas, and I'm just a regular person.
We're all just regular people.
Yeah, that's true, thank you. I just wanted to emphasize, I support Mike Bonin's amendment to lower the threshold. I believe it's very important for us to have a greater choice, and as we know, when you have to compromise, it diminishes the voice that we want to vote for. So I support this amendment, and I hope you follow and try to keep this amendment as it is, and I hope the greater presentation is taken account for with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then before you start, I wanted to wait till you opened your mouth and, no, I want to get Rob, I saw him earlier, Kwan, and Trent, and now identify yourself.
Good morning, my name is Sylvia Moore.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Moore. I represent California Common Cause. I want to thank the Rules Committee for scheduling the hearing today on Councilmember Bonin's amendment. And we echo the comments of our coalition partners, and we want to, we support the amendment, and we feel that this will continue to keep in the spirit of the matching funds program and encourage more diverse backgrounds of grassroots candidates to run. And that's what we needed to lift every voice here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Rob, you want to come up? Mr. Juan? And do we have a Gavin Pearce?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, go ahead.
I can't tiptoe around it. The FBI is once again poking around L.A. City Hall. Realistically speaking, bribery laws can only do so much. There was a saying in New York's Tammany Hall, quote, "There is so much honest graft in this big town that they would be fools to go in for a dishonest graft." Our framers viewed competitive elections as our front line against soft corruption. If you don't pass the Bonin amendment, we might as well call this the Incumbency Protection Act. Far too many people view elections about outcomes only without appreciating the actual process, the full exercise of democracy. If you don't pass the Bonin amendment, you limit our discourse, who gets engaged and who gets heard. This issue isn't academic. It affects lives. It affects lives in L.A. All too often, our leaders stand silent, with children growing up feet away from urban drilling sites while you dilly-dally with reports, silent as you approve a police chief without question about how we lead the nation in police shootings. A friend put it this way, silence is the language of defeat. You may be comfortable with that, but we sure as hell aren't.
Thank you. Next. Identify yourself.
Trent Lang, Executive Director of the California Clean Money Campaign. Good morning. First, I want to thank you for having moved forward the rest of the package to increase to a six-to-one match and lower the amount that is matched. It's very, very important for matching small donors. But the detailed report that we just released yesterday analyzing all of the candidates and their contributions who ran since 2013 really showed that without the Bonin amendment lowering the threshold so it's not harder to qualify would have devastating effects on the city's matching fund system. You've heard some people mention it, it would cut over half the number of candidates who would have qualified, it would slash the number of women who actually qualified from 15 down to three. But also, the report showed that the Bonin amendment is very affordable. It increases the number of candidates to about the same number as now, with the six additional candidates being female candidates, no additional costs, so this is very effective. We hope you support it. We would have to oppose the package overall if this amendment was not taken.
I understand.
Thank you.
Next, please identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Gavin Pearce. I'm a student and community organizer living in CD 14. I'm also a board member on the Highland Park Neighborhood Council, though today I am just speaking as an individual, not for the council. And I want to urge you to pass Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the qualifying threshold for city council candidates. The reason for this is I spent three months leading up to the 2018 midterms mobilizing young voters on college campuses across the state. And in talking with them, one of the main things I heard is that the reasons they don't vote a lot of the times is because they don't feel represented, they don't see the issues they care about, and they don't feel that their vote matters. At the core of all of this, I see is the issue of money in politics. So this amendment can solve this. It makes financing more accessible, allows more candidates to have a fighting chance, and gets the issues people care about in the discussion. So 52 organizations have signed on in support of this, as well as individuals such as myself.
Thank you.
We hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, if you're still here, and please come up and identify yourself. And did we get, I know we got Sylvia Moore, but was there a Sylvia O'Rothe?
This is Sylvia O'Rothe.
Oh, there you are.
Here I am.
So I'm looking for Anastasia Kassar also. Yes. Is it Anastasia Kassar? Please come forward. Okay.
Hello, my name is Sylvia O'Rothe. I'm a longtime resident of Venice, CD 11, and I really would like to encourage you to pass Mike Bonin's amendment, because I think it's crucial to do as much as we can. It's a drop in the bucket to get money out of politics, and the human rights people are always on the wrong side of this. The non-human rights people have all the money, and they are financing all of our elections. And whatever we can do to try and give our side some help in getting a fighting chance to save democracy, I encourage you to vote for this. Thank you.
Yes, so, again, this is the whole thing about campaign finance. Team Weezer, baby! Long live the Wheezy! So, we got ourselves Jose Weezer's brother here today, Marquise Weezer Dawson.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Spindler.
And we got ourselves the top criminal here, fool. Now, these two jokers, they do not want a black man like myself getting matching funds to be on this council, because if I were to do that, the FBI would walk in here and take all 15 boxes of Jose Weezer's junk instead of 20.
Okay, you're not on the subject. Thank you. Your time's expired. Sergeants, remove him. He's in, you're now disrupting the move, you're disrupting, you don't have anything right now. No, let's remove him from the chambers. You know, this is a serious issue. You could play your games a little later. Mr. City Attorney, as you can see, he's continuing to disrupt the meeting, not allowing other people the opportunity to come here and to testify.
Yeah, just in case the mics aren't picking it up, he's shouting all the way out, which prevents us from taking the next speaker, and he's still shouting.
Okay, all right. Rodrigo Vasquez, is there someone? Boron, please come forward, and you'll be the last speaker. No, 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 no. If you're, Ms. Cuz, you have the mic. These are the last two people I'm calling up, so if you're here, Rodrigo and Boron, please come get in line, because I'm going to cut off the hearing after you two. Yes.
Hi, my name is Anastasia Kassar, and I'm an intern at the California Clean Money Campaign. As a young person, millennial, and young voter, I really urge you to push Councilmember Bonin's motion amendment, so that people, young people who are candidates, really have an opportunity to compete and be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Rodrigo Vasquez, Council District 5. I'm here in support of the Bonin amendment to lower the funds needed to get matching funds. I think today, we see all around us, our democracy is under attack. And part of the reason it's under attack is because our citizens aren't engaged and have lost faith in democracy. We need more representation. We need people from the community to come in and step up, and step up as representatives for the people. And the only way we do that is if we empower them through, by being able to compete with the money interests which are really working against the people. So we need to empower the grassroots community. We need to empower people who are struggling, who don't have enough to put food on their tables and roofs over their heads. We need to give them a voice, and this is a way to do that, to get people in office who will represent their interests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, public comment on this item. Unless there's someone else that filled out a card that didn't call your name, you should raise your hand. Okay, so, come on. And there was, is there another hand that I missed? Please come and identify yourself. Anyone else? Then you're the last speaker.
My name is Jane Hirsch, and I'm in Councilmember Bonin's district, and I'm here to encourage you to pass the amendment that he has put forward, lowering the threshold to 11,500. We're currently five times New York, which is terrible, and we're currently the most inequitable system in all the nation. And I thank you for the package that you have put forward, but as you've heard, if this is not part of it, then it's not going to work. And I think we've just seen in this federal election what happens when you have an infusion of women and very diverse candidates. There's great excitement, and people turn out, and democracy is revitalized. And it all starts on the local level. That's where we get these candidates. So I encourage you to pass this amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now, that concludes public comment. You know, Mr. Harris Dawson, I'm going to make a recommendation here. And before I do that, I want to just take a moment to thank all of you for coming down and giving your testimony, giving your statements. And I want you to know that we did our very best to pay attention to the points that you made, and you made some very good points. One thing that I want to make sure that we can do is have something in place that will affect the special election that we hope to be able to pass in a council so that we can have it this June to replace or to fill in the vacancy, the perceived vacancy on Council District 12. So I think the best way for us to do that is to maybe come up with a hybrid of what has been recommended today. So I would be comfortable in trying to market to the other members of the council something like this, where we would adopt the city attorney's report and draft ordinance as amended to reduce the aggregate threshold for council candidates to 20,000, and request the city attorney to prepare and present a draft ordinance for the council so that we could do that tomorrow. I would then recommend that we send to the Ethics Commission the amendment that they could go through, and I mean thoroughly vet, and make a recommendation to the council where it relates to citywide offices and the council, and have them recommend. But I believe that if we make this adjustment, we would be in a position to get the votes tomorrow and at least ensure that this door has been opened, that has been closed for so long, and that we would have this in place to take effect in the June election. So if you're comfortable, and Mr. City Attorney and Clerk, let me read the motion again. Adopt the city attorney's report and draft ordinance as amended to reduce the aggregate threshold for council candidates to 20,000, and request the city attorney to present, to prepare and present a draft ordinance for council action tomorrow. And then we will send the Bonin motion amended, so directing the city's Ethics Commission to thoroughly vet it and make a comprehensive recommendation to the council where it relates to those thresholds. So at least by taking that action, I think that we've made progress in the right direction, and I am optimistic that's something that we would be able to get the votes for if you're comfortable with that.
I concur.
Okay, so with that said, without objection, that will be the order. Now, is there any additional business before this committee?
No, sir. That clears the dust.
Again, thank you all for coming. This committee is over adjourned.